Sometimes you wish it wouldn't go on.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 7, 2016 workshop of the Scarborough Town Council. We're all here today along with representatives from Martin's Point as well as Attorney Shawna Mueller, who represents the town of Scarborough. This evening, we're going to have a workshop concerning a unique bond issue that is proposed for Martin's Point, a 501(c)(3) and therefore eligible under this rather unusual program which requires town involvement. So I'm going to turn it over to Tom and Shawna.
I thought I'd do a quick little introduction and then we can get into the folks from Martin's Point.
Well, I didn't know. Wanted to disclose that there may be a conflict. This young man is my nephew. And so I know he's been involved in sort of this conversation and issues. I just wanted to disclose that and leave it to the preview of the council about could be a conflict of interest or a perceived conflict of interest. Just wanted to kind of disclose that.
Are you comfortable participating without any sense of commitment to supporting this or opposing this because of your relationship with your relative?
Now, he's apparently been telling stories, so actually. Something about my, you know, my, yes.
You're totally comfortable.
This full disclosure might be helpful. Ben, what is your position you hold with Martin's Point? Just so people understand.
Sure. I'm a financial business partner, so I'm an internal finance consultant to all the lines of our business.
Does anyone want to comment? We certainly can discuss and it's the charter allows us to vote on this, but we also have the discretion not to take any action and simply accept.
I think we've allowed more in-depth relationships happen than this issue. I think it would be premature to not allow Peter to participate in this discussion.
Any other comments?
So totally support unless Peter says he has a community area interest, totally support him participating. I personally think it should be on the record in order to give him some cover should anything come up because there is a financial transaction that could be critiqued by others. And I think that it should be on the record.
And when you say on the record, are you saying? I'll accept the motion.
So if this is the workshop, just sorry to interject, but I would suggest that because you're in a workshop setting, that you take this vote on the record during the meeting before you take action on this item.
Yeah, I advise that Peter offer the disclosure now just it would be awkward having gone through a half hour conversation and then only to have that revealed. So that purpose has been served and then they can make the formalities in the regular meeting.
Thank you.
Good. So let's unwind this. Martin's Point is coming to town. In fact, their building is well underway. It's an 18,000 square foot facility down here on Route 1. I think you've all appreciate the site is right next to Mercedes. And back in April, I think April or May, met with a number of folks from Martin's Point and they proposed this whole concept to help them secure some lower cost financing. And so right on schedule, they knocked on our door about two weeks ago saying it's September and it's time. So fast forward till now, there's a number of folks and we probably should do introductions before we get too far along. And I think at that point, I'd love to turn it over to someone from Martin's Point to kind of walk us through generally what these programs are all about and specifically what this request has to do with.
Peter, would you take responsibility for introducing Martin's Point people?
I'd be glad to do that. To my extreme right is Bill Dagel, who like me is trying to retire as vice president. I'm not sure whether you still are or you're a consultant today.
I'm a consultant at this point.
Dick is the senior member of the Martin's Point staff here. We've already met Ben, who is the financial consultant whose brainchild this is, I think. And Lynn Roberts, Mr. Chairman, to your immediate right, is the, I don't know your exact title Lynn, but basically Lynn is the practice administrator will manage this facility. And I'm Peter Garcia and I'm with Eaton Peabody and I'm bond counsel. I have been chosen by the borrower, is the bank, to do that.
Peter, I had asked you, and you were kind enough to provide a bit of a memo that kind of gave a brief introduction to this, but it may behoove everyone at the table and at home just to walk back through that, just to kind of put this in context.
Would you like me to do that?
I think that'd be great.
Please. First, my compliments on your Churchillian request that this be one side of one piece of paper.
Was that a challenge?
No, I think he was the first guy to, he tried to get Phil Marshall Montgomery doing that with lack of success, I think. But in any case, it made me stop and think about what this program's really all about and try to get it on one side of a piece of paper. And I started with the idea that municipalities, as you well know, and other governmental organizations borrow at favored interest rates because the Internal Revenue Code provides a tax benefit to the lender. And that is exemption of the interest which the borrower pays from their income tax. So they get a tax break and they pass some or all of that on to you as municipal borrowers when Shawna issues an opinion that says it's a tax exempt obligation. The Internal Revenue Code also provides that privilege for other than municipal projects. And there's a laundry list of which 501(c)(3) organizations borrowing for charitable purposes, which is what we're talking about here, is one. So that when a municipality like the town of Scarborough wishes to accommodate a borrower like Martin's Point, perhaps in order to induce it to invest in your town, it may issue its bonds, they're called revenue bonds, sell those bonds, in this case it would be to Andrews Goggan Bank, a private placement, loan the proceeds of the sale to the borrower, Martin's Point, under paperwork which says two very important things. First, the town of Scarborough will not, under any circumstance, be liable for repayment of these bonds. That's why we call them revenue bonds. And secondly, that the borrower will make sure that all the expenses attendant to issuance of the bond, your council fees, for example, other incidental expenses that you might incur will be defrayed by the borrower. And going back to what I said earlier about this being a revenue bond, the bond, unlike the bonds that you issue to fund municipal capital projects, will not say that the bond is the obligation of the town of Scarborough. It will say that the bond is to be repaid solely from revenues provided by Martin's Point. There is a process which must be successfully completed in order to take advantage of this tax benefit. We're talking about beginning that process tonight with what's called an inducement agreement, which is a preliminary agreement which you authorize, which says if everything is done correctly and that means I have to satisfy Shawna and Shawna has to satisfy you as we go along, then you will issue these bonds so that Martin's Point will have the benefit of the preferred interest rate because it's tax exempt. The process starts here with an inducement resolution and an agreement, which has been delivered to you and reviewed by your council. From here, we go to the Finance Authority of Maine, which is the gatekeeper for these projects. And they, under statute, must give notice, hold a hearing and make certain determinations that this is a qualified bond, meaning qualified, under their statute, which requires public benefit, which requires that they avoid undue interference with competitors and the state will have to go to a hearing and satisfy them of that. Other than to sign an application that says you've done the inducement and you're willing to go forward with this program, you don't have to participate in that. But that certification must be had before the bonds can be issued. The next step, from your point of view, would be a public hearing. The acronym is TFR hearing, at which the public is enabled to comment on this bond prior to your issuing a resolution that the bonds may be issued if and when. The certification from FAME arrives and more important than anything else, your council advises you that everything that I've just said is correctly reflected in the documents that are presented to you for the final issuance, which we anticipate would probably happen in December, based on a hearing and final bond authorizing vote by you on October 5th, which we're advised is a regularly scheduled meeting for your council. As bond counsel, we're responsible for drafting and circulating all of the documents that the various parties to this transaction need to review and/or sign as we have before tonight. You've seen the package. There'll be more of that. Shawna will get a copy and have the opportunity to comment, discuss language protective of your interests to make sure that the protection from liability of any sort that I've mentioned is delivered under the documents prior to a closing, which we anticipate will be in December.
Great. Peter, you said that this is a preliminary agreement. I might assume that that means that the action that the council takes tonight does not bind us. That will come on October the 5th.
I don't want to.
I think.
I don't want to, I don't want to give opinions.
I can comment. Let me comment. There is, there is an understanding in the language here that says that the consummation of this bond issue is dependent on the council's authorization of the bond issue, which you haven't yet done. So if you decide this is a bad idea between now and that meeting where you'll be asked to approve the bond resolution itself, you can make that change apart.
And I do agree with that. I just wanted to let Shawna say.
Shawna, I think probably the $64,000 question that everyone has is because of our lack of familiarity with this, we all think of bonds as obligating the municipality itself, is are there beyond just a lack, and we all heard Peter say there is no obligation of repayment on behalf of the town, but are there any other risks that the town is taking? If you could address that and then people may have specific questions as to specific risks.
So this program is used throughout the state and throughout, you know, the country and not by the authority of Maine, but other similar kinds of organizations. And it is commonly used because of the issuers of those bonds understand that they really are not taking on liability for the repayment. You know, we pass along all of the risks, regulatory risks, to the extent that they exist associated with this. We'll be passing those on to the borrower as well. That said, you know, I'm always concerned about tax compliance and securities law compliance when it comes to bond issues. So it is the case that you get on the radar screen with the SEC and the IRS because you're an issuer of bonds associated with this project. So if this project has tax problems or SEC-related problems, and I think the SEC problems are diminished because it's a private placement, we're not doing an offering document. So that's diminished even still. But I would just say that, you know, if there were problems with those federal agencies with this bond issue on the borrower side, it would not cast the town Scarborough in a positive light. I don't, I still don't believe that those agencies would take adverse actions necessarily as a town. So if there was something, that's what I would say. I still think this is a reasonable step to take in partnering with, you know, projects that you want to have happen where, you know, you can rely on me to make sure that the process is followed as it's required to do in the statute and other laws. And the only other thing I would highlight, and I know Tom and I have spoken about this and Peter and I have spoken about this, which is that every year, there's an additional benefit on the rate that the town of Scarborough receives on its bond issues if you issue fewer than $10 million of bonds in a calendar year is the measure. It's the tax code, so it doesn't really necessarily make sense. It's not fiscal year, it's calendar year. That is a limit that we need to maintain from year to year so that we can have the town have the best opportunity to get the best financing for its own capital projects. And in these documents that are before you tonight, it's made very clear that whatever the structure of the transaction is going forward, that this project is not going to put the town at risk of, you know, causing problems with that limitation.
Just like in that regard, since this issue, it sounds like we'll close this calendar year, late this year, but still this calendar year, we've already done our borrowing for the year in the spring. So we know exactly how much against that $10 million cap we've already consumed. And theoretically, the balance, if you will, would therefore be available in this arrangement.
Yeah, and I think at this point, because I know Peter has more discussions to have on his side about what makes sense in terms of timing and size of this, that we'll put that off. And I just wanted to make sure that the council knows we're attentive to that issue and we're going to make sure that the town is not going to sort of unlegally surpass that limitation that it's important for you to stay within.
I would characterize it as a risk, but I think I should probably mention the one thing that you should be aware of, we are technically legally the issuer. So these monies, whatever that sum ends up being, counts against our statutory debt limits. Now, I have little or no concern about that. Currently, as of our spring issue, we're at 2.6% and you're allowed by statute to get the 15% of total state equalized valuation. Just to put that into numbers, we have $470 million in bonding capacity. This is nowhere going to touch that or limit our abilities ourselves. I know around this table, there's already some trepidation around the $98 or $100 million that we have currently. So I just would be remiss not to put that on the table, but I don't see that being a limitation whatsoever.
Questions?
So a couple of things. First of all, would the FAME ruling insulate us from any tax liability from the IRS? So FAME authorized it, so it's a valid project. Does that insulate us from any recourse or?
Well, so it's not necessarily FAME, and Peter can speak on this, but as bond counsel, Eaton Peabody will issue an opinion that these bonds are eligible to be taxed exempt. So that's the opinion on which the borrower and we will rely. And to the extent there's a problem with compliance going forward on the borrower's side, that has to go to the borrower. And in the documentation, we will ensure that that's the case. Do you want to add?
I would just add one, but in general terms, FAME doesn't step between you and Martin's Point in terms of protecting you. FAME approves the transaction, says that it's done in accordance with law, but it doesn't accept any credit risk. The answer to your question, I think, lies in the documents that we will ask you to sign, which will say there is no credit risk. And I can't be more absolute in that statement. We won't offer documents to Shawna and I know she won't offer them to you unless both of us are satisfied that you have no credit risk, meaning no obligation to repay.
I am not talking about the obligation to repay. I'm worried about IRS compliance or issues like that. So if FAME approves the program and says that they're qualified as a 501(c)(3), I would assume, and that's a bad word, I know, that the IRS would agree with that ruling and that interpretation as well. Or is there a potential that even though FAME approves the process, the IRS could say, I'm sorry, we interpret it slightly differently after the transactions happened and now we're in a situation where we have to issue the IRS?
So FAME is not, their approval of the application is really underneath, under their state statutory process. So they are really not offering guidance as to the federal tax consequences of the transaction. That happens with borrower and bond counsel. And so it will be in the documentation that we negotiate a loan agreement between, if you call it a loan and security agreement or how your documentation is titled, but there will be a significant document that will lay out the relative risks. And in that document, the borrower will assume all of the risk and responsibility related to tax compliance. They have to. They're the ones. The issues with tax compliance that could arise into the future are things like the facility's not being used according to what they said that they were going to use it for and it's not in fact charitable purpose under the code. And if those kinds of things happen, the IRS certainly could take notice and that liability, we have contractually agreed, is going to fall on the borrower. And that's what I kind of was suggesting earlier, that it's not great if that happens to anybody, but it's not great for us, even if we don't have legal liability as a town. We, there will be some negative association with us by the IRS because of that.
If I may offer two thoughts, because I'm much, much older than Shawna. The biggest concern that I always have as bond counsel, and I think most of my colleagues, including Shawna, who do this, probably would tell you the same, is that the documentation somehow doesn't require or remind the parties of their obligations to maintain tax qualification for the entire term of the bond. So if somebody goes out and turns, they go out and turn this place into a skating rink or something like that, something, just to use a foolish but obvious example, that is essentially an audit event. If IRS becomes aware of that and incidentally, the owner should report it, that change of use or some other disqualifying event, then they would. The worst probable consequence is that they would disqualify the deal as tax exempt. They would disallow the exemption, which means now the bank has a tax bill. And the documents are going to say Martin's Point is going to pay that tax bill, which is the primary inducement for Martin's Point to make sure that the tax compliance is correct. They'll sign 40 pages of documents before this is done that say all the things they're going to do to avoid that consequence, but it would not be your problem. And if, for example, auditors did show up, and by the way, in 35 years of doing this, I have personally experienced an audit.
Scarborough was usually the first.
And this is a flying squad, by the way, and I think they pay more attention to more populous areas where bond councils are a little more aggressive than they are here. But in any case, the documents are going to say that in the event that you incurred some expense had to involve your auditors or involve your council in that just to make sure that you didn't have an adverse consequence, which you shouldn't anyway. Again, Martin's Point would be obliged to pay the bill.
So, sorry if I could just follow up a little. What is our obligation then as the bond issuer?
To issue the bonds in accordance with the agreements, starting with the documents you're authorizing tonight, more particularly with the final authorizing resolutions that will be presented to you in October.
That document will look similar to what you've seen in the past to authorize the town Scarborough bond issues, but it'll talk about this program. It won't be a general obligation bond. It'll be a revenue bond. There'll be some changes in that regard and it'll authorize, you know, various town officials to execute documentation, including the loan and security agreement that will provide all the protections that we've been discussing.
And that loan and security agreement would be on the same agenda. We would see that and the council would be approving it before we take that action, correct?
Not usually. Usually, the issuer adopts the bond resolution, which authorizes the transaction, and then all of the closing documentation is prepared. And that's similar to what we do with the other bond issues where the council says, okay, this is the bond issue that we're going to do this year. And then I prepare this bond documentation for the town and the chairman of the council and the treasurer sign those documents, including the bonds themselves. So that would happen on the same schedule if we were following a normal schedule. You know, that not necessarily has to be the case, but I think the idea is that we don't want to invest the resources in preparing all the documents before the authorization is provided. That's generally the reason for the statements.
Counselor, get ready.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions that come to mind. What if the borrower no longer exists? What if Martin's Point goes out of business? Then who's responsible? My other question is, and it probably goes along with that, is who are the guarantors of the bond? You know, if you're saying, oh, it's not the town, it's not, you know, it's like, well, who is essentially? Also, if the town wanted to go through a similar bonding type situation with FAME in the future, are there limits? Because there may be other projects that we would think this would make sense for. Because I know I've seen FAME borrowing, you know. because I know I've seen Fame borrowing, you know, for more unique, shall I say, situations, perhaps, you know, with business, types of business and whatever, go through Fame borrowing. And my last question is, has Martin's Point used Fame for other borrowings? Are there other places where they, where they're located? Like, I know they're in Gorham and where.
Are you thinking if they went into a bank?
Through this process, through this Fame process.
Your prior question, though, was, you know, the bankruptcy.
Yeah, the first one is, so who the heck, who the heck backs up the bonds? I mean, I'm not used to seeing moneyless, where you don't have some guarantor somewhere.
Well, there is, I mean, this is a private placement, so Anders Gagen big issued a commitment letter, similar to just a commercial transaction. And they have laid out what collateral they need in that commitment letter. And off the top of my head, I don't know if what's in there.
I think it's a negative pledge of some sort, and I don't, I'm not going to.
It has nothing to do with the town, but you're right. I mean, there's, Martin's Point is on the hook for this in a variety of ways. So your question about what if they go out of?
Yeah, what if Martin's Point no longer exists? If for some strange reason?
Is the answer that we are not a guarantor, notwithstanding risks such as bankruptcy, dissolution?
Correct. Right. If that happens to the town, it's still not obligated in any way to financially contribute to those debts.
Okay. If the town wanted to use the same process for any other borrowing down the line, does Fame have a limit on?
Fame has a number of different programs. This is the municipal securities approval program. I'm not aware that they themselves have a limit. It's more dictated by the town's limitations.
But there's also, there are also limits imposed by the federal law on certain kinds of programs. This one's not subject to one of those limits. Fame is one of the gatekeepers. They get an allocation every year from Congress, and they parcel it out to your project or my project or someone else's project. But the answer is no, this project does not limit any other project that you might entertain.
So as a follow-up, could we, so it sounds like the federal government provides limitations for Maine, and then Fame sends out, says this is what each one can use?
For some of the programs, but not for this one.
This one is limited only to the extent that the 501(c)(3), in this case, Martin's Point, cannot use more than 150 million? There's a, there's a number which is.
So it's limited by the company that, or?
There's a limit on the use by this company, which is vastly greater than this bond. But there is no limit on 501(c)(3) bonds being made. So you could do 20 of them if you wanted to.
Has Martin's Point ever used this type of financing before?
We have never used this particular financing. We only had a bond that we did, just early 2007, 2001. We have a Mahifa bond. Peter, you can remind me what that acronym stands for, but it wasn't for any of our facilities. It was a different debt structure, part of what we inherited when we combined the vote in as well as our other structures as well. But this is the first time Martin's Point itself is using this vehicle as well.
And this is just, and again, this is for the construction of the building itself, period, no operational expenses, whatever, whatever, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. It's real estate.
So it's the real estate would be the collateral, and probably too, yeah.
I honestly don't remember. It's in the, it's in the papers you were given, but I haven't really got a better reason to. It includes the construction, the equipment of the building, and the soft costs that you normally see for a building like this, engineering, architecture, or so on, and the cost of issuing the bond.
Okay, thank you.
And if we say no? What are the options for the point?
Martin's Point could go to Fame and ask the same thing. Yeah, Fame has a similar program.
They could potentially cut us out of that process altogether and go directly to Fame.
Potentially, yes.
Other questions?
So, well, not intention, so what's the benefit of going through the town rather than going through Fame? Other than the good credit standing of our town, because the credit rating could go up.
The credit, the credit standing is not.
It's not part of the consequence.
It's not an incentive to the borrower, which is not to demean your credit standing.
No.
The incentive to the borrower, in this case, I think more than anything else, is relationship. They want to be a good citizen, and you have the opportunity to do this, and they've asked you, would you please do it? You will bear all the expenses.
So I'd like to follow up a couple of questions. So the first is, and some of this is recall, because we've had this somewhere on, have we had a, any information provided to us about the project and the value of the project to the community, either through economic development or through town government? Anything at all? Because I know that there was some conversations about it coming forward, but have we received anything, just so I can go back and research about the project?
Not aware that we've received any progress through the planning board. Was some conversation of a projected assessed value or job creation?
We covered the initial investment of the project itself in the construction of the building and the soft costs. We talked a lot more about relationship, partnership with the community and the creation of a community space that, you know, currently under development. More of that, those types of discussions in a partnership of using the space.
So to drive down, has there been a presentation to the council regarding the community space and the value to the community?
Nothing I'm aware of, no.
Other than general discussions through the planning board and?
Staff to staff has had some initial discussions.
And there's conversations, as I understand, going on with your current senior coordinator with the community as far as defining that relationship and use of that space. So I don't think anything's been defined at this point, other than continued discussion to figure out a way to promote parties to benefit by the use of the space.
So the reason why I bring that up is that there is, there's a statement in the memo that says that this is a preferred mechanism or tool for favored, favored private entities or private activities. And I think that if this is something we are going to move forward and support, we've worked very hard over the past year, in particular, to be transparent and provide greater communication. And I think that we will need to express what the, why it's favored, and then why this is of community value for us to take this, take this approach, which is unique. So that should be part of it, whether it's included until the final approval or after, but it should be done so that more in the community understand that. The other question I had was, looked at charter, and I couldn't find anything really around this, because there's always a focus around bond issuances greater than $400,000 or expenses. What are our limitations as a council regarding any, are there any limitations based on our own charter or any other governance that, you know, controls us as a town?
No, I mean, the, the process for approving bond issues has been, you know, through council order. And I know in general, you, sort of by custom, do a first reading and a second reading of most items. That's not a requirement in the charter, but that was one of the, you know, things Tom and I, that Town Manager and I have talked about. Other than that, it's sort of statutory level limits on debt, and we're just very, very well within those.
My recollection, the charter is specific, in reference to general obligation bonds, I don't believe it even contemplates other types of bonds, this being a rep. bond.
Well, yes, so in the absence of any specific restrictions, the council can generally do what it wants by majority vote. I was just getting to, so will this include two hearing, I'm sorry, two readings and two public hearings, like a few other actions? Or is this surely going to be two readings?
I think that the hope of Martin's Point is that tonight, the council will consider in approving the inducement resolution, which will authorize Town Manager to sign the inducement agreement and submit the application to Fame. And then on October 5th, to take final action on the bond authorization.
After public hearing?
After a public hearing on that day, right.
So that timeline satisfies all the, either Fame or Stepster requirements? If the council wished, you could have a more elaborate approval process?
Well, I don't want to complicate it, I just, I think that there should be a public hearing dedicated to this.
And there will be.
Yeah, and it shouldn't be, what's the word? It should not be consolidated with the final reading, the action. I think that there needs to be a gap between the two so that there is some input. Maybe there won't be any input, I just think that, that's a preference. If that's the will of the, I just, I think that it should be discussed, if that's the will of the council. The other question, and the reason is that I'm stuck on this favored private activity, because I think that while this is very exciting, and I understand, by the way, that's at the very top of my road, so it's very welcomed. We as a council, though, need to understand what this sets into precedence and how this is managed going forward for other projects. So from an administrative standpoint, I think you need to take that into consideration. The other question I have is really for Tom, and that is really after the issuance, no, excuse me, as part of the issuance, does the town get any financial benefit as far as being able to assess a fee for being the conduit, because that's what we are, for the conduit, for the transaction? Do we gain something out of this, other than the relationship financially? Is this reported on our financial statements? And then the third piece is that do we have, is there any requirements after the issuance on behalf of our management team to either monitor, manage, or, and do we have the capacity and ability to do that?
There's a lot of, a lot of questions there. I don't have the answer on the financial statements, frankly.
I don't either. I would think that's an auditor question.
I believe we do have, I'm certain we do have the administrative capability to continue monitoring this, but there will be ongoing responsibilities, correct? And this loan agreement is exactly what it sounds like. We'll be receiving annual payments and have to, in turn, make those payments to satisfy the debt service.
I plan to draw it, that the payments will be made direct, so you're not, you're not burdened with the accounting and bookkeeping.
Even better. These are particulars we have sort of, yeah. You know, the assurance that any costs associated with this would be covered.
Yeah, I'm not worried really, it's more about our ability to manage any post-issuance
It sounds like our involvement post-issuance will be very limited, yep, not existent.
And Peter, my comment, I feel like, too, is as far as payment, or loan payment, that is paid directly to the bank.
Yes, that's the anticipation. Might I answer a couple of questions?
Hold your question, you'll be next. Peter, why don't you answer?
Just before I forget, because you've raised a number of very good questions, I'd like just to make a couple of comments. You very eloquently struck on the word favor that I put in the memo. I want to make sure that you understand that I was not referring to your favor. I was referring to the Congress of the United States, saying, "These are favored deals." Meaning, "We'll let you issue tax exempt bonds for these deals." I'm not suggesting that you should favor Martin's Point over somebody else.
No, but even if you exclude that word favor, I think our town needs to understand when these are a reasonable tool for any person coming into town or any person currently in town, so that it's an incentive across the board and that we're fair and equal to everyone.
The other comment that I wanted to offer, because you've raised an issue, which I've seen raised a number of times before, and that is, how do we make sure that everybody has a say about this thing? And it rests long enough that we can, with good conscience, go ahead and approve it, knowing that the public has had a good look at it. The way I draw these things, and I think the way Shawna's office draws these things, if I remember correctly, is to send out a notice that says, "We're going to have a public hearing on such and such a day, and if you have any comment, please send it to us right now," which doesn't preclude your right to appear at the hearing. But then we usually ask people to schedule the action after the hearing, and the reason is, these things take, give or take 90 days to get done, and only if you compress, to the maximum extent allowed by the law, and you even get them done in that period of time. There are a number of periods of time that have to run within the process. That having been said, if you decide that you wanted to have two hearings on this, you could, and that's your decision.
So the hearing that you're talking about creating, is that managed by you, or is it managed by the town?
It's managed by you.
It's a town.
Typically, we prepare the documents, approval by your council and your manager, distribution to you or perhaps your chair, but it's your meeting.
Yeah, Peter, it is very common practice for a matter that has, I would say controversy, but if it's complicated or controversial, that public hearing and final vote are separated by a meeting, just to allow further time for counselors, for public to.
It's a relationship issue within our town.
And if that needs to be, we can do it.
So in this case, it would be the second meeting in October of the date of escape meeting, but it would be the, well, you could do it maybe else, the 19th or something like that?
Yeah, it is.
Thank you, Chair.
I have to agree with Counselor Baybine. I think it's critical, we owe it to residents of this town who voted into these seats, that they're getting as much information as possible. I'm going to be very frank, I'm not comfortable, I'm not particularly happy that I'm going to have to vote on this tonight. I knew it was in the agenda. I guess I didn't realize exactly what I was getting into. I don't think the public has had enough time, I certainly don't feel like I've had enough time to make a vote. I'm happy to know that my vote tonight isn't, can be changed, I guess that's what everyone is saying. But I, you know, I always say that I want us to be a business-friendly town, that's a big thing for me. You know, the more supportive that we can be, the more streamlined that we can be to help companies and businesses come into this town, I think the better off we are. But on the flip side of that, I owe it to the residents of this town to make sure that I'm getting us involved in something that is going to be okay and safe for them. And I'm not at that comfort level at this point, and I just think, I think it's important to be frank and honest, and that's nothing against Martin's Point, that's nothing against you, Peter. It's just, I don't know if I'm, I just don't feel like I'm getting all the answers that I need at this point, where I am.
Other comments or questions? Peter?
Just a couple of real quick things, I want to just make sure, I think I heard this, but we've never been asked to do something like this before. Is this the first time it's really come forward, it's kind of innovative?
Yeah, not to find out. Ruth, this has been the finance director for 35 years, I don't believe she's had the occasion either.
So we won't have a situation where someone has brought this board before and said, "No," so this is new. So I kind of echo some of the other accounts, I think going forward, learning, it'd be great to have some criteria for future projects about if we are going to do these types of things, if it does represent some risk to the town. We have a pretty clear statement about what the value is of the entities we're trying to partner with, but that can come later. The only other thing I'd ask between now and at some point in time is to, and I think it really echoes what Shawna asked, and Tom, I'm not sure, I think I heard you say you're not quite sure yet. I'd like to really understand all the balance sheet implications. How does it get booked? What does it do? What does it do to some of the critical ratios that we use for borrowing and other things? So I'd like to really understand sort of the financial presentation impact and how that might impact our future borrowings or other things we might be doing to do comparisons.
Yeah, which really, I'm not sure we've fully dealt with the question of whether there was a rating agency impact risk, because it's going to be counted as a part of the town's bond financing. And so is there a risk created by that, which means it increases the bond? But it's, so does the, do the rating agencies have the potential to undermine our rating status?
Based on this bond issue, I would be very surprised if the rating agency can ding you in that process. You know, I don't personally handle the rating process for the town, the financial advisor does, but I know that, I can imagine that he would present this as a positive to the overall creditworthiness of the town because of the business activity that's being supported and generated. I mean, you know, that's what he would say. I don't know that it would have any impact at all.
And maybe getting a little bit of advice from Joe?
Sure, our financial advisor and also our auditor, I think I can, I can, in order to get good answers to those two questions.
No, I think, maybe to simplify it, I just want to understand that this $8 million goes to our overall credit limit for a certain amount of time. It's not just the one-time issuance. We're going to carry this forward on our balance sheet for. issuance. We're going to carry this forward in our, on our balance sheet for a number of years until it's-
The declining balance, but yeah.
And I think it's really important to be very, very clear. My hesitation has nothing to do with not supporting business or, or Martin's Point at all. It has to do with making sure that I'm protecting the people of this town. It's, for me, it's black and white.
Other questions? Shawna?
I was just going to offer that, that another option is, even though Scarborough has not participated in this program before, there are other main communities that, for example, I know the town of Cumberland has participated in this program just within the last couple of years, and so it might be helpful for the town manager to talk to a couple of town managers of that experience and that, and offer that.
I think we'd all appreciate that.
Yeah, Waterville, Camden, Unity, Westbrook, there's a, there's a host community that uses these fairly regularly, particularly those with higher ed institutions in town.
That's where I've started, yeah.
Good. Other questions? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
We'll convene in about a minute.
Thank you. Peter, do you work with, oh, I forgot, John Cunningham?